And we can start with the rising for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and I believe I saw Mr. Scott, Mr. Bucky Scott on the call if he could do the roll.
Yes, Ms. Albright. Ms. Albright?
Muted.
Okay, I can see her picture, so I'm gonna say she's here.
There she is, she's unmuted now.
Oh, boy.
Here.
There we go, thank you.
Sorry, I'm in my car, I can't figure it out.
Sure, Mr. Miller?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. Bucky Scott, yes. Ms. Leonie?
Here.
Ms. Bell?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Everyone is here.
All right, um, on the agenda that is published through our website on Board Docs, or listed the procedures for public participation, let me just say one thing beyond what's written there. I heard a little bit of feedback after the last meeting that, um, that the board did not comment after people gave their statements. We do sometimes, it was our prerogative, sometimes we do that, but the portion that is for public comment is for, for your comments and some of us will sometimes not choose to respond, especially if the things that are being brought up, if we're not as well-versed, we don't wanna, if we're not on solid footing on what we're gonna say, we might choose not to make a comment at that time. And I just wanted to let people know that that's just the way that these, it's not a town hall, it is a, it is a meeting, a board meeting, so it, it has a little bit more regimented feel to it, and I just wanted people to understand that. Okay, so the procedures are listed there, and now, anyone want to raise your hand? We have time for presentations by the public on agenda items. And Mr. Matt, do we have anybody raising their hand?
We have no hands raised at this time.
Okay. All right, no hands raised this time, okay. Now, um, Ms., do we have a superintendent's report?
No report, Madam President.
Okay, all right, um, we have announcements, under, under announcements, we have, do we have any agenda edits? I do not believe we do. Ms. Dr. Cooper?
We do not have any agenda edits.
All right, I didn't see any, so I was double checking. I did want to announce that there will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss potential litigation. And we do have information listed for Rock the House Entertainment Group, who is coming to do our virtual graduation. It's just a, it's just a copy of the agreement, I don't know, did anybody want to, from the administration, want to briefly talk about the arrangements? For those assembled or no? Mr. Spores?
I can speak to that. Is there anything in particular you want me to go through the structure of the virtual graduation?
Yeah, that'd be good.
So, Rock the House Productions is going to put together the virtual graduation for us this year. The format for the graduation will be similar to that of our traditional graduation, with most aspects of the virtual gra, of the traditional graduation being instilled in the virtual graduation. It'll have our colors, logos, and most of our media. We're gonna have the seniors' portraits on there, and the seniors are also going to submit pictures in their cap and gown for their slide when their name is being read. The people that are reading names are Mr. Bailey and Ms. Allison Fulmer. As usual, they would read during our traditional ceremony. And then at the end, seniors are also going to submit a clip of themselves throwing their cap and, played at the cap and gown ceremony at the end, the cap ceremony at the end, excuse me. And the normal people that would speak in a traditional graduation ceremony are still gonna be speaking at the same times. The format for the ceremony is pretty much the same as the traditional, and we'll go through the ceremony much as would if we were in the stadium.
Okay, did we get, um, did we get the rights to play this, the, the class song that the students voted on?
So that came in today, and we did not. There's a few major things, hurdles, that we cannot get over. The biggest one is that the writer's song is now deceased, so the songs are held with the audit, or the writers of the music, and there is multitude of them, it's not just one. We would have to contact each of them and get a contract signed for us to be able to use it. The company, Mrs. Oswald was on the phone with the company today. The biggest thing is that we're going to stream it, and it would be available to a mass via streaming for a long period of time, so that changes the structure of cost for us to purchase it, and what exact paperwork we need to have filled out for us to do that. If we were gonna purchase the song lyrics to be used for our band, that's a different animal and much easier to do, so we're not gonna be able to purchase that for use during the virtual ceremony.
Okay, well, I appreciate your efforts and Mrs. Oswald's efforts trying. I didn't realize that the, that the artist was deceased, so, okay. Thank you for going through all that for us.
Not a problem.
Okay, any, any board comment on the, uh, on the announcements or on the graduation ceremony? Okay, we're hearing none. So, next is the consent items. Do I have a, a motion for consent items 3A, 1 through 20?
This is Tanya Bell. I'm motion, hi, I motion for 3, 1 to 20 minus number 11. I have to abstain from the vote for number 11 because the carrier up for vote is my employer.
Okay, so that's a motion for...
A motion for 5, can 5 be included? It's to be determined.
Oh, you wanna leave, oh, so can we, okay, so let's give...
Find out, that's all.
Um, Ms. Bell, would you be okay to have your motion be for 3, 1 to 20, removing 11, 5 and 11? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
Mr. Strobel, okay, any, um, any discussion on those items except for number 5 and number 11, which we'll deal with separately? Okay, hearing none, can we get a vote on those? Mr. Scott, I know your name.
Yeah, no, it's all good. Um, all right, so I, I...
This is, um, this is 3?
3A, 1 through 20, removing 5 and 11.
Correct.
Who was the second, I'm sorry, second by...
Mr. Strobel, Mr. Strobel.
Mr. Strobel.
Good, how are you?
So, all right, we're gonna, Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leonie?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
And Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so let's deal with the easier one first. Can I, can I get a motion for 3A 11?
I'll give you...
Who said that?
I'll make that motion.
No, Mr. Strobel, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Albright? And any discussion before, before we have our vote? Okay, it's pretty straightforward. Mr. Scott, we could have a vote on this?
Sure, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott? Yes, I'm sorry.
That's you.
Yeah, it is me, I gotta write that down. Uh, Ms. Leonie?
Yes.
Ms. Bell, you're abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay, Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
You only have one abstain.
And just, just a note for, for the assembled public, um, the, um, the carrier for our work, work, our workers' compensation administrator, they have, Myers &amp; Bell's been our administrator for, for a long time, just wanted to point that out, much longer than Ms. Bell's been on the board. Okay, so can I get a motion for, um, a, uh, 3A 5? We can leave it as to be determined and then do an amendment to put a name in, or we can, or you can put a name in, and then we can discuss it and vote yea or nay?
I'll make the motion for the TBA.
TBD, okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, um, do we wanna open the floor for the board, at least for the board, to discuss where, where our heads are at, or do we wanna hear from administration what their recommendations are, or do we wanna hear from Mr. Strobel, who is the finance, I mean, the facilities chair?
I, I have one question that was unanswered, and then I would like to hear from the, from the administration, because we talked a lot of time, you know, they've done a lot of work on this, they've worked with, you know, Steven Biggerstaff, I mean, he's in charge of facilities, you know, what he really, what he wants is very important for us, I mean, so my question was, there was, there was a question, and Kathleen, maybe you can help me out, was there any research done on the RFP piece that we, that there was consideration, that maybe not both parties met? Was there any more work done on that, just 'cause?
No, we are fine in all areas. I just wanted to point, yeah, we're fine, but each of the contracts, they're now matching the price, there's no price difference between the two of them, and keeping in mind, that is a 3% increase year over year.
For all, for both, for both groups, it would have been a 3% increase year over year?
Yes, all, that's a 3% increase, just so you know what you're voting on here, just in case that percentage.
Kathleen, can I ask what the first year price is? We haven't seen it.
Yes, it was on that spreadsheet that I'd sent out via the board, it was 481,750, 481,075.
And then up 3% every year 2 and 3?
Yes.
And this compared to previous years, when you combine both cleaning and maintenance, if you took the increase year over year, if you're cleaning out, you're at parity?
Yes, it seems that all contractors coming in as 3% increase year over year.
Okay.
So, I guess, let me ask, um, the board, all, if, if the prices are equal, Mr. Strobel, as the facilities chair?
I think we need to...
What are your, what are your thoughts on which group to go with?
I think we need to hear from the administration, because I've always been, that's been my mantra from the very beginning, you know, we've really, we've hired them to do a job, and I really think it's important that we let them do their job versus micromanaging them, which we don't, I'm just making that point up, make that point that, you know, they've done the homework, we're an overseer, so I'd like, I'd like to hear what the recommendation is.
Okay.
I'm gonna, this is Dr. Cooper, I'm gonna ask that Mr. Biggerstaff unmutes himself and provides a recommendation from his standpoint, since he's our director of facilities and contracted services, so, Mr. Biggerstaff?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Um, I did some research on both companies, and any research on halters obviously is not hard, because they work for the district doing the grounds maintenance, and so removal correct, currently. I did do reference checks on both vendors, both are qualified to do the job. It's a difficult decision, looking at them, when the pricing is the same, it makes it a little bit more difficult, but I believe that the district would be well-suited to go with a local company this time. In my opinion, we've tried a national and local company twice in the past, and they have not worked out. With the contractor halter, you're looking at getting a local company that can bring people in to do the job when we need them to, and, and keep the contract price down over time, so we wouldn't be making larger purchases for HVAC and mechanical and other stuff that would not be covered currently the way we're structured. It's also, I think, time for us to give us another look at maintenance, the way we do it. We have a new maintenance system coming onboard, if the board approves it tonight. I believe that I'll be able to work well with them, I have worked well with them in the past six, six to seven months here. They're more than capable, they've been doing the maintenance work, and I think that they deserve a chance here to prove that they can handle this contract.
Can I ask if we do bring on this new maintenance organization tool, like the software that we're, we're thinking about bringing on, is that going to be for, or do we need, does halter need training on that, or is that gonna all, is all the information from that system where you're keeping track of what needs to be done and when, for preventative maintenance, as well as just things that break down, will that all be taken care of in-house?
It will be taken care of in-house. The new system is called FMX, and it's, it's a rising system within the CMMS world. It has event management, inventory management, work orders that are created by the program itself for preventive maintenance. It'll also be able to scan in on the individual units when you're working on them, and it brings up a maintenance history, and all this is afforded with the contract we purchased with a training that's gonna be able to be given after the contract goes into effect. So, they should, they should be brought up to speed on how to use it.
All right. Any other questions from the board for administration? Okay, I forget who made this first motion, was it Mr. Strobel?
I did.
Do you want to amend it to put a name in?
Yep, I will amend it to, um, the halters, and they're based on Steven Biggerstaff's recommendation.
Okay, and, um, Ms. Albright, I believe you seconded it, or are you okay with that?
I did.
Amendment, are you okay with that amendment?
I am.
All right. Okey-dokey, um, so we'll go back to Mr. Scott for a vote.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leonie?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
All right, and, you know, yet again, for the folks listening, just wanted to say, right now, we, normally, the, the work of getting a recommendation out to the full board would fall to the members of those committees, in this case, it would have been the facilities committee, there would have been a recommendation from the board and those committee members that would come out to the full board. Since we are not doing committee meetings, because everything is virtual, and is already difficult enough without adding three other virtual committee meetings on top of it, all the work of those committees are actually happening during the course of the board meeting, so a lot of that back and forth that we just had would have happened at another time in the normal before times, and someday in the future will hopefully happen again that way. So, I just wanted to say that. All right, so moving on to personnel consent items, do I have a motion for number 4? 4A 1 through 3? Got a motion for that?
I'll motion it.
Ms. Bell, do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Leonie, so since the last board meeting, um, the interviews and offers for these positions have been, have happened for these positions, uh, 1, 2, I guess, 2, 1, 2 through 14, so those were all blanks last time we met, so they're all filled. Do we have any concerns, comments on any of those leadership positions from the board?
Nope.
Okay, on anything, or on anything else before we, we, we take a vote? Okey-dokey. Oh, actually, I have a question. Teachers in the parks, do we have an idea how that's gonna look? I don't know if Ms. Hefter is here tonight, but if she isn't, somebody else from the administration, do we have any idea what teachers in the parks are gonna look like this year?
I believe I did see Ms. Hefter in, yes, she is on the call. So...
I don't know if we have to, do we have to unmute?
Yes.
I did.
Oh, there you are, hi.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, I can, hi, how you doing?
Awesome, so, right now, the, the directors of tips are talking about going virtually, so at this time, I know that I had the staff members on for approval.
Yep, yep.
But it is up in the air at this point, whether it's gonna be virtual, when the dates will be, and we're gonna be working on a summer learning plan through Daniel Boone, that may change the way that looks.
Okay, and the eight folks that we have identified here, they know that it may be in person, it may be virtual if it happens, and they're on board either way, or will we maybe have a different vote if it, if they make it certain that it's gonna be virtual?
We might have a, have a different vote at this, I need to reach back out to them.
No, no, that's fine, I just, I just kinda wanted to know where we were with it, I'm like, teach parks, I remember parks, okay, thank you so much.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Strobel.
If it ends up going virtual, is this something they did before? It sounds like, you know, because teachers in the parks, you know, the whole idea was to get them outside and, you know, science and all that, has this ever been done out, you know, in a virtual environment before?
No, it has not.
Okay.
My, my thought is that if it is offered, I'd still like to try to make it happen, because the, the loss of, you know, the, the summer slide still happens, even if, even if, even if kids can't meet in real time, and so, and, you know, out, out in the parks, so if there is, we should, I think we should evaluate what's available, if it is gonna be virtual, and still try to make it happen.
Yeah, I'm not recommending...
I mean, does the administration feel the same, Ms. Hefter?
Yes, I feel that, um, there should be something offered for the students in the summer.
Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't recommending that you not do, and I just wanted to find out, has it ever been done, because it just seems like, like all the other things that we've had to experience over the last eight, 10 weeks, or whatever it was, this is a new road, you know, and so I have complete confidence that you'll all be able to handle it wonderfully well, it's just, it's just more, more, more importantly, just, I just, you know, what was the thought, has it ever been done before, so that's all.
Yeah. Okay. And that, thank you, Ms. Hefter.
Thank you.
So, other, did anybody else have any questions for Ms. Hefter, or, or the rest of the administration, or anything in personnel consent? And if not, Mr. Scott, if we can have a vote?
Um, okay, so, Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leonie?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller?
Wait, you did.
Anybody see him?
I do.
Am I unmuted now?
You are, you are.
Yes.
All right, and Ms. Olson?
Yes.
All right.
All right, moving on to the treasurer election. Mr. Strobel is our current treasurer, and since nobody jumped forward into the fray last meeting, he's, he's, he is the one that is, for the motion to approve, do I have a motion for 5A 1?
A motion.
And I will second. If there's no discussion for the board, we can vote.
Okay, Mr. B. Scott, that's me, yes. Ms. Leonie?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Abstained, no, yeah. Can I vote for my...
No way. Ms. Olson?
Yes.
All right.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations. Is that two years?
No, a year and a half, it'll be a year and a half, because he jumped into that position when I took over in my current position, I left the treasurer position in the middle of the term. Congratulations, sir. So, added, added personnel item 6A 1. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Strobel?
I'll second it.
Ms. Albright? Does either Dr. Cooper or Mr. Pratt, Mr. McKnight, just wanna say, remind the board briefly why we're, why we're voting on this position right now?
Yes, this was a position in the CBA that was the last one that was, you know, not a whole, whole and part position, and this vote is to make it go from a .71 to a, a full position to support our students and families in the area of, areas of health and physical education, K to 12.
Okay, any comments from the board? Or questions? Okay, if we can vote on that, on Mr. Scott?
Ms. Leonie?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, here, yes. Ms. Olson?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, um, old business, we have some minutes to, to vote on, number 7A 1 and 2, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'm, Kevin got it.
Kevin, and it's Bucky Scott's second, is that what I hear?
Oh, again, yes.
All right, any, any, any comments or questions to the board on the, on the minutes from previous meetings?
No.
And if we could get a vote, Mr. Scott, again?
Ms., Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leonie?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
All right.
All right, um, new business, I have none, any other board members have any? Okay, we'll call that none. And do we have any presentations by the public on issues? Hopefully, Mr. Matts will let me know if there are any hands raised?
We do have...
One, Marlon Spats.
Did I hear that there's one?
Yes.
Okay, can you unmute him for me?
Yep, Marlon Spats, I'm going to unmute you now.
Okay, um, and when, after you're unmuted, if you just state your name and your address, and then you can make your comment.
Thank you, Julia. Name is Marlon Spats, address is 102 Verdor Lane in Douglasville.
Okay.
Thanks. Daniel Boone Area School District Administration, it was incredibly frustrating to read your letter sent this morning regarding independent picture opportunity, as it adds yet another last-minute... as it adds yet another last minute feeble attempt to push the class of 2020 through its graduation ceremony with the absolute least amount of effort and cost. Please know that your refusal to consider an individual in-person graduation ceremony, such as Pottstown High School and so many other districts, is exceptionally short sighted. During a time when forward-thinking progressive school districts are leading with unprecedented and creative efforts that comply with the state's COVID-19 guidelines, Daniel Boone Administration chooses the easy, low-cost virtual option while hiding behind their own contradictory interpretation of the COVID-19 guidelines. The contradictory reference is related to the district's latest, latest position, and I quote, "We will never compromise the guidelines and protocols established by the governmental agencies directing public institutions. We will not encourage or facilitate large gatherings, travel on roads, or the potential for groups of people to gather together in a large public setting," unquote. Yet, the district has orchestrated a three-station process for seniors to pick up their cap gowns, accept locker contents, and return district-issued iPads that is strikingly similar to an individual in-person graduation ceremony. And many would like to know why the district's personal item exchange process is not a compromise, but the proposed ceremony is. This interpretational difference appears to be one of convenience, as opposed to actually listening to the students and parents, the survey results, and the petition, and by following an existing protocol already in place at Pottstown, Reading, Ole, O&amp;J Roberts, and so many other schools. Additionally, as you're aware, the PA Department of Health has stated they do not administer guidelines on graduation ceremonies, but rather the Department of Education holds that responsibility. Pursuant to the ground swell of individual in-person ceremonies, Mr. Pedro Rivera of the PA Department of Education issued amended guidance on Friday, May 15th, expressly allows for this type of graduation ceremony within red phase counties. In summary, the students and parents have requested this type of ceremony, and the State Department of Education allows for it. But Daniel Boone Administration remains committed to a contradictory interpretation of the Department of Health guideline, while disregarding the Department of Education's amended guideline. This is even more difficult to reconcile, given the almost nonexistent communication from the administration, whose strategy has primarily only been responses to public appeal. This leadership style is ineffective. It promotes division between the administration and the student parent body, and ultimately erodes confidence and trust in your abilities to lead Daniel Boone School District to the forefront in Pennsylvania. In closing, obviously, nobody asked for this situation. However, true leadership never lets a crisis go to waste, but rather capitalizes on the inherent opportunities hidden inside, something this administration is either unable or unwilling to accomplish. I thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. Thanks, Julia.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? I see, I see one.
Yes, we do have one being raised.
Okay.
It's identified as Jim, and I'm going to unmute you now.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. My name's Jim Kerr, 611 Ridge Drive, Douglasville. First of all, I agree with a lot of the points that Mr. Spotts made. But I would just feel it would be remiss for me if I didn't share my thoughts on this situation. My wife and I have lived in Daniel Boone since 1995. We've had two kids graduate from Boone. My son Danny is our third. So it's an emotional issue, and there's no doubt about that. At this moment, I've never been more frustrated, upset, and truthfully embarrassed to be a Daniel Boone resident. As you're aware, the seniors already have lost so much. Spring sports, prom, senior breakfast, the list goes on. You had a chance as, as our school leaders to give them a meaningful, virtual, in-person graduation in the model, model of what Pottstown, Ole, and others are doing. It's a viable option. It's a doable option. And yes, it's even within the social distancing guidelines. Yet, the decision by this administration amounts to a PowerPoint graduation and a photo op on a makeshift stage in the school parking lot. In my previous career, I was a newspaper reporter and editor. I covered hundreds of school board meetings. And I've always believed that school board members have to be a special breed. Who else would put up with such thankless, community service role with no pay and more headaches than I'm sure you want or that you deserve? But perhaps our push for a meaningful graduation is just another headache. But I also know that some of you are parents. And I have to believe that maybe, just maybe, you'd be fighting a little harder for a respectable event if your children are graduating this year. Thank you for your time.
I just wanted to make sure that we have no other hands raised?
There are no other.
Okay, I just want to say one quick thing, and then I'm going to turn it over, Mr. Cooper, before we adjourn. I, I did meet with a group of parents yesterday concerning graduation. Me and two other board members met over Zoom, social distancing. And, you know, the two, unfortunately, the fact that two of the people that were at the meeting were two of the people that, that, that wanted to, the two people that wanted to speak tells you that, at least they didn't think that our meeting was very fruitful. And I'm, and I'm sorry about that. I just, I, I did want to at least acknowledge to the folks listening, you know, I, we, I, I did try to reach out to those people. I wish that we had come to a more agreeable accommodation, but that's not what happened. So I did want to turn it over to Dr. Cooper.
Madam President, if I may, "Learning Together: Advocating for All." Our Blazer Learning Community Vision, as part of the Daniel Boone Area School District Board of School Directors and Pennsylvania Department of Education Comprehensive Plan, approved this past September 2019. Providing a safe, healthy, equitably accessible environment where all students, in particular, those who are most unfortunate in being immune, vulnerable, or compromised, is not something that this administration could guarantee for our students due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and would be short sighted on our part to think we would be able to do so. As the superintendent of schools for the Daniel Boone Area School District and commissioned officer at the Commonwealth, who took an oath, of which in part included, keeping the safety and welfare of the educational community a priority, the decision was made to provide a virtual commencement ceremony that was accessible and equitable for all of our graduates. The virtual commencement ceremony, although not exclusive to Daniel Boone, however replicated by a school district directly to our west, as well as another directly to our northeast, is one we feel confident will celebrate, to the best of our abilities in these most uncertain times, the accomplishments of our seniors, while waiting for further guidance from the governor on potential of a more traditional commencement ceremony, tentatively scheduled for the end of July. Many conversations have taken place among and between administrations at both the district level as well as building level, with our neighbors to the west and northeast, to gather ideas on how to provide a commencement ceremony that is dignified, as dignified as possible, while being delivered through a virtual platform that would be accessible and would be equitable to all students. The reference to district orchestrated three-station process for seniors to pick up their cap and gowns, accept locker contents, and return district-issued iPads is in no way similar to an individual in-person graduation ceremony, as it does not require participants to exit the vehicle, similar to that of how we're distributing meals. However, the commencement ceremony planned, referenced by various stakeholders, and indicated is being done in various districts in our county, is, as well as others does. I would encourage those individuals requesting a ceremony, other than the one that is currently planned virtually, to use the lens of a parent or parents who have a child who's immune, vulnerable, or compromised, and would not equitably be able to participate in an alternative that may possibly place them at risk prior to passing judgment on administration's decision. Longtime senior executive for the Disney Company, Roy E. Disney states, "When your values are clear to you, making decisions becomes easier. True leadership is making the difficult decisions, something the Daniel Boone Area School District Administration was willing to do, based on those values. What we value as a Blazer Learning Community is the health and safety of all community members, which is one of our top priority focus areas, and is inclusive of those who may be immune, vulnerable, or compromised." Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the board before we adjourn? Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.